Alright, we're gonna go ahead and call the work session to order. We're gonna get Ashton Fowler to open us up for prayer.
Dear every father, thank you for letting us gather here today. Let us do the business in the way that you need necessary and do this as we leave and do all things to you and strengthen the community around us in your name. Amen.
So we'll go ahead and just... Alright, so we'll go ahead and start with number one. I know we have Jeremy here to discuss the GFL increase on the parade and I know Alex, you'll probably have to help just get everybody updated on this. So Jeremy, you probably just wanna come up to the front. I know I talked to a couple of you guys later, well earlier this week. So we had, there was an increase for the residents and also for the apartment complexes. So we, we did the numbers. So I think everybody's on the same page, everything's okay. The city is gonna absorb the cost for the residents, so you will get the increase. The city's just gonna pay it so the residents don't have to pay it. And we are, we do have that resolution on the agenda to be voted on tonight, right Alex?
Yes ma'am.
Is there anything else you wanna add?
As far as the apartments, we're gonna increase the apartments and then the city will absorb the residence for the CPI 3% increase.
Alright, so do you have any questions for us Jeremy?
I'm good, I was just here if y'all need to make.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions about this? Alright, well thank you Jeremy, thank you so much for coming.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, and we have the discussion that is necessary regarding the human resource job description. And Jane, I see that everybody got it, so thank you so much for getting that over to us, but we haven't had time to review it. So, I know this is, I think this was the last job description that we needed because of the new pay plan, right?
We're actually still working on the police and fire, we have to reformat those departments, but other than that, yes.
Okay, so is it, is it for the total department or is there like a few here and there for each department?
I believe there's a total of four of them.
Do you have a, do you have a timeline of when you can get those to us?
I really don't, really don't.
How long do you think, just like an estimate, cause I mean, we don't wanna push you. I know you have a lot of other things that you have to do, but we wanna go ahead and get all these finalized, especially since we, you know, we've started to pay people on the new pay plan.
Which do you want first, the fire, the police, or the human resources, tell me that.
Well, we have, so what is this that we have? We have, I got a job description for the human resource specialist. Is this the new one, is this the updated one that says?
Now that's from 2000, I believe that should be.
It is.
Yes.
So...
So I would just guess that updating yours would be the easiest, would it not in your mind, to do it first?
It doesn't really matter to me, we can.
Instead of, cause it's one for that department, so speaking, you can move in the fire, police, whichever.
Well, let's ask this, so what about 30 days, the, with the first council meeting in April? Could we have all of them by then? Because I, when I got this, I was thinking that this was the updated one, I didn't know this was the old one.
Honestly, after talking to the mayor, I could probably meet yours.
Sixteenth.
The sixteenth of April.
So April the sixteenth, you'll have the police, fire, and you'll?
Ajar.
There's too much going on with the Affordable Care Act, they've got new requirements, we're having to submit electronically. There's just, I need the rest of this month for that project.
Question, when you said reformatting, is that just to make the opening and the closing standards stuff the same, or is there to create changes?
It's just create the look at your, to your, to recall the blue and the red, the red, white, and blue basically format, that's the format.
But it's nothing, it's not substantive?
There's gonna be some verbiage because you guys wanted us to scale it down and that's the format we included. It's gonna take all of that.
So will this affect more people were implemented based off their job description?
No.
Okay, is the next one?
I don't have nothing, nothing to do with that.
But we won't run into a situation to where people are saying they're doing things that they're not being paid for or anything like that, right?
I'm not aware of that. If they're, if they're saying that, their department needs to let me know, but I've not heard anything about that.
So April the sixteenth, you said you'll have, which one, the yours?
Yes.
And then after that, do you have, can you wanna go ahead and give us a date for the other two, or we're just gonna set a date on the sixteenth?
Excuse me, I just thought we'd give you a date and not really, I just can't do it right now.
Okay, alright, so we'll...
I know that's important to you, we're hoping to look at our handbook, that would further delay that, but if that's what's really important, y'all like that, we'll work on that.
Alright, thank you Jane, I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Alright, so the number three is discussion, this discussion about the city website. So I know Lee handles the city website, I just wanted to make sure everybody knew what was available on the city website. And I wanted to ask you too, how do we, how do we get information over to you to be added to the city website? And how often is that updated? Cause I know a lot of times they look for like council meeting minutes and things like that.
The city clerk sends me the council meeting minutes at some point after they're approved, not until they're approved. I have not gotten any lately. But that's usually within a couple of weeks of a meeting. Anything else that anybody wants on the website, including building services, I mean, something posted, I change that. I usually do that monthly, but the meeting minutes are posted as soon as they're in. But anything that, anything that's legally required to be posted in terms of ordinances and procedures are officially there. So my hope is that people go there because everything is on there and we carefully put together everything and try to keep it updated as soon as something's provided.
Okay, sounds, and I was gonna ask you this too, do you have a website for us to just, or email address for us to send it directly to you? Or do we send it to somebody else?
Just send it, just send it to my city council email address.
Okay, and then that's available here at City Hall?
Yep.
Thanks Lee. Alright, we have a discussion that's necessary by city attorney Wayne Livingston to declare property at 562 West Fourth Street as surplus and the proposed contract between Taladega Clay Randolph Childcare Court and the city of Solocaga relative to the real estate located at 562 West Fourth Street.
Yes, as we all know, that's the, that's the real estate that's behind where ARC is. Used to be the board of education building, burned down, it's nothing but bare ground now with a few bricks and some other things still up there. It's not needed by the city, it's not used for public purposes. The childcare people have, have signed a contract to buy that property for $115,000, which is the actual appraisal of that property. With the city not paying any cost at all, so it's not gonna cost the city anything to get it closed. It's a permanent ordinance, so it has to be published in the paper, I believe Friday, is that the next time, Alex?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, after that, it can be closed and it's probably gonna be closed next week, the sale itself. Once we get, if you all approve it, it will be.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Thanks Wayne. Number five, discussion that's necessary to award or reject the bid received from John and Kurt C Incorporated in the amount of $178,300 for the roofing and waterproofing of the museum.
That's correct. We had eight bids. Well, we sent eight packages out. We had three people that did not bid at all. And we had five bids which were included in your packet and we chose to go with the lowest. And the original projected amount that we had on capital was 250,000 and that does include waterproofing the building in addition to the roof.
Does anybody have any questions on that? I do have a question, when do we anticipate this to start?
Um, once you guys approve this tonight, then we'll sign the contract, the mayor will, and then they said within 30 days.
Alright, number six, I think this one is Reed's, discussion necessary for Judy Stewart Boulevard resurfacing from the railroad tracks to Curtis Lyles Court. And we do have the money, so Reed, this is the one that you had added, right?
Right.
Yeah, and then Reed said we do have the money, the estimated project cost for this is $358,668 and it would come from the special gasoline tax. So he wants to have this done and we already have the money, forty dollars he knows.
Reed, I think it's a great idea, cause that road's gotten worse over the years, you know, with the quarry there and people coming in and out, so thank you for looking into that. Yes ma'am.
Thank you Reed.
Alright, number seven, discussion necessary to appoint Nicole Brown to the Mrs. Abatement Board for District Three. I know I've spoken to a couple of people about this, I think, well you called all the necessary people and when? You had a say so in this as well too, there's no conflict of interest, um, did you have any?
No what?
About appointing Nicole Brown to the Mrs. Abatement Board for District Three?
I have no...
No objections, okay. Alright, I mean, I don't see a problem with anybody.
It feels like a conflict though because she's so involved in processes related to, to actually executing on any of them.
We did call the Alabama League of Municipalities.
I was just gonna say, I actually called the league and the league said as long as there's no financial gain or anything that could be taken advantage of, then there wasn't an issue, the city attorney says, there's not an issue also, so. And she, she lives in that district and I, and I've got to have somebody, as you know, on the abatement board that we're responsible for two members now. Both of my members have resigned, so I need a, I need someone that represents us.
Okay, so that's on the agenda to be voted on tonight as soon as... Alright, number eight, discussion that's necessary for mayor, trying to change current budgeting and all associated records to recollect a name change from administrative and general administrative and finance. No change in funding, department name change only.
This is more of a clarification for that department.
So there's no change in?
Springbrook and UKG have already reflected the change before we started looking into it. And it just makes sense because we have a finance department.
Alright, number nine, discussion that's necessary for the administrative and finance office to apply for a John G Burton endowment scholarship for training. It's no cost to the city to apply. I think I talked to Alex about this, this is some training that we actually already have scheduled and already prepared to pay for it. So even if you didn't get it, it's not gonna really affect the city unless you, you win, unless you're awarded the scholarship. So it would save us the money for it, but we're already prepared to pay for it.
That's correct. Is it also online?
Yes ma'am.
Oh yeah, and also act two, they will do it in-house, so who else was the, who else was the other person that was going with you?
Um, me and Erica are gonna go to the revenue class and then me and Nicole, we're gonna take the online city clerk course.
Yeah, and Alex will still be available for city business while taking the online class in her office. So number ten, discussion that's necessary to approve refund for garbage fees for resident Jimmy Brown, 33 Hickory Village in the amount of $525.80. Resident was billed by city utility board since August of 2021.
Was he not moving here?
I think it was, he was paying it through his lease, he was double paying it, so it was in his lease, the amount was a part of his lease and he was also paying.
But didn't the lease people pay us?
Yes, they did. The lease people are the ones that contacted us and they announced to the resident.
So number eleven, discussion that is necessary to approve training expenses for business licensed clerk Erica Doby and city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert to attend the University of Alabama Certified Municipal Revenue Office's 300th Level Training Course online for October 16th through 18th, 2024. Registration fee is $235 per person. Total estimated expenses for Doby and Lambert of $470.
By approving this, we're asking to be approved now, so, because it's next fiscal year, but we can get the early bird special if we can register now these classes.
And this is also part of your required training?
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
Well, if this isn't one of the, oh, it's online, okay.
Right, this is not one of the ones for the scholarships.
Okay.
Alright, any more, any questions on that?
Alright, number twelve, discussion necessary for fire chief Nate to apply for the assistance to firefighters grant for new thermal imaging cameras. Tot, imaging cameras, total price $4,183,067. If awarded, city match 5% and grant writer fee 5%. Grant closes March 8, 2024.
He had asked...
We're here for Nate.
No, he just had asked us to add it to the agenda so that he could apply. And again, it's only for $4,100 and they would only be responsible to city for 10% of that $4,100.
If awarded.
Yeah, and the biggest reason we're asking for this is the three cameras we have, two of them are over 20 years old and there's no support whatsoever for them. We can't even buy batteries for them. And the third one we have is about 12 years old and the company that made it no longer makes cameras, so. And once those parts are gone, we won't be able to service it at all.
So let me ask you, so if you're applying for the grant and you don't know if you're gonna get the grant, so if you don't get the grant, we still need the cameras, right?
Ultimately, yes.
But you, you just wanna?
But it's, yeah, at the 10% of $4,000 versus, it would probably be close to $100,000 to buy three to four cameras that we need, so.
What exactly are these for, like, can you explain them?
So, we basically use them on any type of fire, we, we run your car, your house on a lightning strike or something. It'll go in, tell us where hotspots are at, we use it for search and rescue. If we expect a victim in a home, we can go in, like, the captain or whatever can carry it in and he can see the guys even in smoke. So, it's great for being able to find stuff that you can't see with the naked eye. Prime example, we had, I guess it's been about a month ago, had a structured fire on T V Lane. Fire was inside of the wall, couldn't find it, but we didn't have a thermal imager. So we ended up taking a sledgehammer to the wall of the house to eventually find it and knocked an eight foot hole in the wall. Where if we'd have had that camera, we could have cut a one foot hole in the wall and couldn't have. But we didn't have a camera that was operational, so we couldn't find it, we had to destroy a half man's wall to fix it.
When, when will it be awarded for?
They usually start awarding those late in summer. It takes a couple of months for them to get them all in and then they review them and then they start awarding from there. Sometimes you'll know early, sometimes you don't know till the end of the period, which I think is in October. I think the official grant period ends in October, so you may actually find out the end of August, but it may also be October before you know. It just depends on the process.
But if you have something that you need, you should go ahead and try to get it in the budget so that you have it in the budget.
I think that is the plan, is to go ahead and put it in the budget too and hope for the grant.
Then we can always take it out.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
Alright, so these next action items are new business, it's number 13. Action that's necessary to approve the ordinance 2264-24 to sell the real estate property located at 562 West Fourth Street from the city of Solocaga to the Taladega Clay Randolph Childcare Court. And that's what we, yeah, that's what we talked about earlier. So action, uh, number 14, action that's necessary to approve resolution number 33-2024 for an extension to vacate till April the 29th, 2024 of Tennessee for William Davis located at 317 West Third Street.
Is he paying rent as we know him?
Um, I don't...
I've contacted him and he's agreeable to the contract that you all have looked at and will sign it as soon as it's approved.
But, but is he paying rent between now and the vacating day? Is he paying rent between now and the vacating day?
I thought you're, y'all were saying that he didn't have to.
But we've given, we've given him an extra month.
He hadn't paid in several months.
Yeah, but he had paid, so I think the goal was to just get him out because it was hard, because we were already taking a loss now, we just basically just won possession, that's the problem. Alright, number 15, action that's necessary to approve resolution number 30-2024, awarding or rejecting the bid received. So this is what, also what we talked about earlier is for the, yeah, for the museum room. So that's on the agenda to be approved. Number 16, action that's necessary to approve resolution number 30-2024, amending resolution number 65-2023 authorizing an increase to apartment complexes using GFL waste collection and disposal services provided by the city of Solocaga effective October 1st, 2023. So this is, you know, this is a resolution that we're having to, we're seeing, just to make sure we're on the same page. Okay, and number 18, action that's necessary to discuss refund for garbage fees for Jimmy Brown. And we already talked about that, so that's another thing we're gonna, hold on. Yeah, we discussed it. So we'll just move down to number 24, so it looks like our old business and our new business matched up. So action number 24, we're just gonna approve fiscal year 2024 accounts payable invoices in the amount of $122,249.9 and action that's necessary to approve February payroll in the amount of $527,498.8. Does anybody else have anything else?
Yeah, Alex, who got the bid that we declared for nuisance?
Sir, we had no one bid, no one submitted a bid at all.
Say what now?
Nobody submitted a bid on the project.
So what do you do in that case, rebit it?
We have to rebit it out.
But you can immediately rebit it out?
It's minor, so maybe we can miss.
So then, will you change the price?
We never put a price down, they have to, I said, we need to relook at the contract.
But I thought you and Mike, I thought Mike sat down and you, and y'all done the contract?
We did.
You gotta take some more stuff out, Mike, you think?
So is it just rebit it until something happens?
So, so is, how do we, how do we advertise it? Was it just the Daily Home?
We advertised at the Daily Home, we advertised it on the city clerk's page, we advertised it outside the city clerk. We advertised it on the board out front of 301 North Broadway.
So did we advertise it the way we usually advertise?
We advertised the board this time.
Okay.
So let me ask this, so do we have a list of people that we can send the bid to?
And we sent them to over, I think it was 10 companies. Several local and several not local.
Remind me, what's the scope of the work? What have we been for?
It's going to be to tear down the houses, clean up the yards, get rid of the cars, the debris, the cars, all that stuff.
And one is, is asbestos off first and then to come and tear down second?
That's separate.
Right. Did we get anybody to bid on that?
But there's no, that really is not gonna be enough to have to bid out.
Gotcha.
But there's no sense in finding, if anybody has, nobody can come up with it.
Sure, cause you want that pretty much done at the same time, right?
Are the, is the last company that did our abatement still in business or is there, did they not make any money on it?
Well, there was some, there was, we had a company come in and done a little bit, didn't we?
Toby Iver did, Toby Iver did one, small, of course.
We sent him a copy.
We sent him an invitation to be to the, this is, what would bid out was a contract for anytime we need anything. If I be Iver for particular piece of equipment, as long as they're there, they can take that, nobody can win it.
Well, did you also find the file, I guess that Scott wrote up, so we know what we're doing to each property?
Well, we could pull it whenever we get it.
Okay.
Maybe we should narrow with a specific scope rather than a longer term option.
What's your thoughts, Mike, to help, to help us get this in motion?
Yeah, especially with the terms that you just said that we advertised, do you think those terms need to be adjusted?
I don't know how you can adjust them, you left, I mean, we still have minimum insurance requirements, so to allow people to burn. That's, that's it, so.
As a contractor, that's, as a contractor, that sounds to me very simple, get your equipment on site with your people and you're getting paid by hour.
We even put an escalation for fuel, where it was gonna be based on your base. Fuel, average fuel price at the time of the work contract. We did a base price and we're going to allow them to adjust the fuel up if they own based on that, if it's going to continue. I mean, it's basically like...
As easy as we can get.
So when will it be, when will it be rebidded, Miss Alex? When will you do that?
We can bid it as early as tomorrow, if that's what the council would like us to do.
Is there something that you can?
I wanted to relook at the contract with Mike and get Reed involved as well.
Yeah.
And see.
Can you get feedback, do they give feedback online or they just say, no, we don't wanna do that?
Nobody showed up to the meeting, but me and the mayor and Reed.
I wonder if we can reach out and say, what's the issue? Just kinda see what they're...
Says, yeah, that's a good idea, just wanna see what they maybe need to take out or add in and get with Mike and Reed to see if that's feasible. And make sure the city's not in any danger.
Alex, do you think we can, I missed what Nate was saying, I was talking to him, I'm sorry.
He had asked that I call some of the vendors possibly.
That's the same, we were all having the same conversation, especially the ones that have done work for us in the past.
Yes ma'am.
Thank you.
I think so. Alright, so... Alright, so we'll conclude the work session, if nobody has anything further to add.
I think he's gonna handle it, okay.
Yes. So y'all ready to conclude the work session?
I am.
Do we need a brief recess before we start the council meeting, or are we ready?
I'm ready when you are.
Ready, okay. We'll call the meeting to order at 4:26 PM. Alright, roll call, Ashton Fowler?
Here.
Nate Brewer?
Here.
Lee Pearman?
Here.
Laura Heed here. Ashton did the invocation at the beginning of the work session.
For the pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the oath for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Mayor Higgy, do you have a report for us today?
Yes ma'am, President, I just had some information I'd like to share with the council and the people of Solocaga. Solocaga has been offered a very unique opportunity for funding for vehicles and equipment for our Solocaga Police Department. By working with John Merrill, Solocaga has been extended and offered a funding during the fiscal year 2025 for four fully equipped police vehicles and one digital fingerprint machine. The city will contribute 25% with the approval of the council of the cost due to the second quarter of 2025. There will be a $50,000 upfront due at signing to start at the application and finalization of the contract. This money will be available at that time. Contracts must be signed by March the 22nd, that's the 22nd of this month. John Merrill will be here in attendance at our next council meeting and to further breathe the council and the public on the scope of this opportunity. At this time, we do have curator of our, our museum and arts. I would like Ms. Green and also Don Smith, if you'd like, to come and share something with the public and also with the council. Thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Judy Green, I'm the curator at the Comer Museum. And I'm here today to thank the city council, the mayor, Alex, city clerk, and Mike Wedstone for all the support that they've given us on our building the last couple of months. We've had some floodings going on and some sewer backup and all, but everybody pulled through and came out and supported us and I really appreciate it. Some things, we dropped off a red binder for you to look at. Couple of months ago, we, Sunrise News Online came out and interviewed a bunch of people in Solocaga and featured Solocaga in the first edition. Well, the second edition that came out, the museum was solely featured in the second edition, which we are really proud of. We've made a lot of changes at the museum, going forward, hope to make a lot more changes. The galleries, if you haven't been, they support the city and they tell what your city is. The visitors would bring in, support our restaurants and our hotels, the different events we do. The car show that we just had was a success and the visitors stayed, entered the car show and ate in our restaurants. And a lot of them stayed in our hotels, so that's a big deal to us to help support the city. The, one of the biggest questions I've been getting lately on the museum is where is the marquee? So, I've been promised it'll be in this week. So I've been promised it'll be in this week. We've had some, uh, problems with it, but it's ready for us to go ahead and place. It should be if I'm in the movie. So I just wanna thank you all for what you do and for your support for the museum.
Thank you, Ms. Judy.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Mr. Mayor?
That's all, Madam President.
So we're gonna adopt the gen- agenda. I need a motion.
I make a motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, number seven, approve minutes of the reg- regular work session held February twenty-second of twenty twenty-four. I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number eight, approve minutes of regular city council meeting held February twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, um, all of our old business now onto new business. Number nine, action that's necessary to approve ordinance number twenty, twenty-two sixty-four dash twenty-four to sell a real estate property located at five sixty-two West Fourth Street from the City of Solocaga to Talladega Clay Randolph Childcare Corporation. Um, do you have anything, um, to add with this out? I know we talked about the work session, okay? All right, I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Lee Pearman, second?
Second.
Second by Nate Brewer, all in favor?
Yeah.
All right, number ten, action that's necessary to approve resolution number thirty-three dash twenty twenty-four for an extension for William Davis to vacate property located at three seventeen West Third Street till April the twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-four. Um, I need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number eleven, action that's necessary to approve resolution number thirty-four dash twenty twenty-four to award the bid received from Johns and Kirksey Incorporated in the amount of one hundred seventy-eight thousand, three hundred dollars for re-roofing and waterproofing of the, um, of our museum. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number twelve, action that's necessary to approve resolution thirty-five dash twenty twenty-four, amending resolution number sixty-five dash twenty twenty-three, authorizing an increase to apartment complexes using GFL waste collection and disposal services provided in the City of, um, City of Solocaga effective October the first, twenty twenty-three. I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number thirteen, action that's necessary to approve resolution thirty-six dash twenty twenty-four, amending resolution number thirty-five dash twenty twenty-four, authorizing a three percent annual customer price index increase to residential and apartment complexes using G- GFL waste collection and disposal, disposal services provided in the City of Solocaga. Do, hold on, do we need to say that we're gonna, um, assume three percent?
Go ahead, say it.
Okay, the city is going to, um, absorb the three percent for the residents.
Effective April first.
Effective April first.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, action that's necessary to approve a refund for garbage fees for resident Jimmy Brown, thirty-three Hickory Village, in the amount of five hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty cents. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that's necessary to approve request for, for Mayor Higgy to change current budgeting and all associated records to reflect a name change from administrative and general to administrative and finance. No change in funding, department name change only. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number sixteen, action that is necessary to approve training expense from business license clerk Erica Doby and city clerk treasurer Alexandra Lambert to attend the University of Alabama Certified Municipal Revenue Office's three-hundred level training course online from October sixteenth through eighteenth of twenty twenty-four. Registration fee is two hundred thirty-five dollars per person. Total estimated expenses for Doby and Lambert are four hundred seventy dollars. City clerk will be available if needed. I just wanted to add that, you know. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number seventeen, action that is necessary to approve the administrate, the administration and finance office to apply for a John G Burton Endowment Scholarship for City Clerk Treasurer Alexandra Lambert to attend the municipal clerk's spring institution online from April seventeenth through April nineteenth, twenty twenty-four. This scholarship will cover the registration fee to attend online in the amount of two hundred and sixty-five dollars. No cost to the city, um, will apply in order for, um, her to apply for this scholarship. Can I have a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number eighteen, action that's necessary to approve the administrative and finance office to apply for John G Burton Endowment Scholarship for Business License Clerk Erica Doby to attend the Alabama Municipal Revenue Office Association two-hundred level training institution online from April the tenth through April the twelfth, twenty twenty-four. This scholarship will cover the registration fee to attend online in the amount of two thirty-five. Again, this scholarship won't cost the city anything to apply. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that's necessary to approve the appointment of Nicole Brown to the Misses and Abatement Board, District Three, for the remaining term, term that runs concurrent with the council member. Ken Brewer and Frankie Thompson resign from District Three, February twenty twenty-four. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Number twenty, action that is necessary to approve fiscal year twenty twenty-four accounts payable invoices in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, two hundred forty-nine dollars and nine cents. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Action that is necessary to approve February payroll in the amount of five hundred twenty-seven thousand, four hundred ninety dollars and eighty-three cents. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Time for anyone to address the city council. No action will be taken at this meeting. Please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record prior to addressing the council.
I do have a quick question. Our portion from the work session is not on the regular agenda. Does that need to be discussed during the regular meeting as well, to get approval to apply?
It's usually just a, a verbal blessing to apply.
Okay, that's just what, I just wanted to make sure that that's all we needed to-
Now, I'm asking, I'm, I'm, we usually do it with the verbal.
We know, we know what it's gonna be.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure we were leaving it on that.
Have it added? Something go ahead and do that?
It's not gonna hurt to add it.
Can we just add a real quick add?
We need to get him to do it.
Yes, thanks, who, who, can you do that real quick, Alex? Like, add a, all right, move, add it.
Just write it, just write it on Disney's and we'll vote on it.
Oh, but yeah, we're gonna have to go back and, are we gonna have to go back and rebook to amend it? Or would it mess it up to?
Wouldn't it be too late to do it on the second meeting, or?
It's due on the eighth.
It's due on the eighth.
We need to go back to amend it.
What was Avery?
Oh, yeah, add James Stewart that we discussed.
And we also do the James Stewart.
I thought we were just talking about James Stewart.
No.
Now, he's saying since you add, oh, it's going for ahead. Can that wait? Is there a deadline on that?
So, Laura. You sure?
That's what he said.
All right, Laura just made a motion that we amend the agenda. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Yeah.
Alex, will you make sure this brings into the minutes that we are amending the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay. Okay, action that is, action that is for Fire Chief Nate Osgood to apply for the assistance of firefighters grant for new thermal imaging cameras. Total price, four thousand one hundred eighty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents, if awarded. City match is five percent and grant writer fee is five percent. Grant closes March eighth, twenty twenty-four. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second, well, I got Nate, hold on, hold on. I got Nate first. Second?
Second.
Lee? All in favor?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. All right, so that's everything. We got everything now? All right, so does anybody, anyone of you guys wanna say something?
Make a motion, we adjourn.
All right.
Second.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Time of adjournment is four forty.
Thanks for coming.